We always open first for public comment. If there is anyone here to, who would like to address the board about anything that is not related to one of the two applications before us tonight, is anyone here for that reason? We were just here for the two applications, right? So seeing nobody, we'll move on and open the hearing for the special permit requested by David Sorgel.
Sorgel.
Sorgel, okay. Is this the one where he's not here?
Correct, I'm representing this one.
Okay, thanks. It's an application for a special permit to increase a non-conforming setback at 28 Mountain Laurel Path Florence MAP ID 37-88. We'll ask anyone who addresses us to start by giving you, us, your name and address for the record that Carolyn is keeping, and we'll ask the representative of the applicant, Mr. Sorgel, to start by doing that and by giving us a very brief explanation about the request for the special permit. We have the materials in front of us.
Would you like me to stand up?
There used to be a podium, but as long as everyone can hear you or...
Can you hear me? My name is Steve Silverman, I represent Valley Home Improvement. I don't know if you need my address. We've worked on the Sorgel's house in the past, and they've asked us to draw plans for a screen porch and deck addition on their home, and when we originally filed for a permit, we realized at some point in time when the house was sighted, the rear and side setbacks were mistaken, and so literally the home is non-conforming the day it was built, and we are here to ask for a special permit for this screen porch and deck that would continue to be non-conforming. The Conservation Commission has signed off, my understanding, on this, and we're here tonight to ask for approval for encroaching into the setbacks.
Okay.
We also, David, have emails from the four neighbors who are all in support of the project, and if I could give you the...
Sure, we should have at least one copy for the file.
Is that the same that was emailed?
Oh, okay, but I don't know if the board, has the board seen this?
I didn't know that.
Yeah, you did, actually, okay. Okay, thank you.
And I would like to say, maybe proactively, that the Sorgels feel strongly that the way that they live in the house, they really feel that this is the best placement for the screen porch and the deck, and that it wouldn't make sense for them to cite it anywhere else on the house based on the configuration of the first floor and how they would...
Okay, and there is a certificate of occupancy was issued upon completion of the construction of the house, and that was more than six years ago, right?
Yes, more than 15 years.
Okay. So it's considered to be a grandfather pre-existing, not pre-existing, but grandfather?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing...
Non-conforming?
Right, it's non-conforming now, and there's no, passed the statute of limitations to go require that to be...
Right, so we're looking at this application the same as we would under 359.3 for any request for a finding for an expansion or alteration of a non-conforming structure?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's a special permit, so to go to three.
Is one of the abutters that's been notified, Pathways Co. Housing?
Yes.
And then to 27 and 26, and then the personal Florence Row?
Right.
And no, nothing from any other city departments, or no comments or concerns?
They also had to get a, I don't think I put that in my staff memo, they did have to get a permit from the Conservation Commission, which they...
And just so you know, literally, no one else can see, if this permit is approved, no one else would be able to see the screen porch or deck. It literally faces into the woods, and as you know, Pathways is a cluster development and it's quite a distance away.
So that kind of goes to the question of whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, no one can, literally, no one can even see it.
And there aren't trails going through that, those woods adjacent between Pathways?
If there are, I don't know, and from being back there, I saw no evidence, so if it was, it might be 10 feet past the forest line.
And that area is permanently protected open space.
So no one else will ever be living there? Okay, any other questions?
There should be trails, that's what I was asking.
Any other questions from the board? I think, any, so we don't need any more, is there anyone here from the public who wanted to address this application? Okay, so I guess we can have a motion to close the public hearing for this application?
So moved?
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, that's unanimous, and then a motion on the request for a special permit?
Shall I take this one?
If I have it. I move that we grant a special permit to David Sorgel to increase the non-conforming setback with 28 Mountain Laurel Path Florence MAP ID 37-88.
Not increasing the setback, increasing the non-conforming?
Increasing the non-conforming nature of the setback.
Okay.
There is more non-conforming than there was.
Right.
Correct. Second.
Any discussion, or ready to speak? I think we're ready. All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay?
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Oh, it's 5:40, so we can move on to the second and last item on our agenda, which is an appeal of the building commissioner's determination for a sign at 32 Masonic Street Map, North Hampton, MAP ID 31D-120, and the appeal is by Carson Poe and Theresa Peron. I should disclose that way back, I think I might have done some legal work for you in connection with something having absolutely nothing to do with this, or this location, or this matter in any way, I don't view it as a basis for a conflict, I don't believe I've represented you for many, many years since then, and there's certainly nothing pending now or necessarily expected in the future. But does anyone present have any objection? If I stay, okay? Everyone okay with that? Okay, thank you. So, go ahead with that preface.
Great, so Tess Pro, Poe, 3 Hampton Ave, number 41, currently, so you're in our speed of our package, this is in regard to the 13 Masonic Street condominium, the building is a condominium with seven individual unit owners across 13 units, there are five commercial units, four of which are owned by an individual owner.
Can I ask you to come forward?
Sure, yeah, it's so funny without the podium.
It's good to be able to hide behind a podium.
And you guys are so...
We could push it forward if you want, but...
No, no, it's fine. So the signing question's been out of compliance for about seven years now, but it only became a priority for us after the fire that happened last November, so my husband and I own units four and eight that we have lived in since 2010. At that time, after the fire, numerous people were coming to the building and approaching us, and that included insurance adjusters, and first responders, and fire inspectors, and attorneys, the media, people were trying to account for everyone and everything in the building, and it kept coming up, oh, what about the law firm? And we kept having to explain, no, that's just an old sign, that business hasn't been functioning since late 2012, early 2013. Because of that, my husband contacted the building department to inquire about asking that unit owner to bring the sign into compliance by taking it down, since that business was no longer operating, and John Frye, the building department, asked if we would try to just resolve it on our own among the other owners. So my husband reached out, you know, obviously after the fire, there were a lot of other things going on, but we were trying to have regular contact with folks. There was an owners' meeting that was scheduled for March, at which time that unit owner did agree to take the sign down, so that was good. We let John Frye know, he wished us well, said good luck with it, great, glad that we don't have to do anything. Many months passed, by September it did not yet come down, and there had been work at the building that involved a lift, which would have easily facilitated taking it down, so the unit owner was aware that it was non-compliant for a very long period of time. So in October, my husband submitted the formal complaint to the building department, and the decision that we received back was that it was not that that sign ordinance was not going to be enforced, I think you have the, thinking of the language, because this ordinance has traditionally not been enforced in the city, and we will not selectively enforce this complaint. So my understanding, having been on the planning board side of things, is that, you know, the majority of, if not all of, our zoning laws are complaint-based, that, you know, we don't send someone out kind of driving around looking for violations, but that when someone has experienced some difficulty as a result of something being in violation, you know, you submit a complaint and that triggers the inspection, and that's how zoning gets enforced. In this case, it wasn't clear to me what the rationale would be for opting not to enforce that sign ordinance in the central business district in the historic downtown. You know, we know that there are many other businesses in town that have closed, that have complied voluntarily with the law, you know, Fiorentina, Faces, the Optical Studio, you know, all those places went out of business and they take their signs down. There's still a few that are up, and I don't know if complaints have been submitted for a couple others that haven't, but that's really the question is, you know, why, what would the rationale be for choosing not to enforce in this case? And I will make a little amendment and say that upon us appealing that decision, you know, and kind of investing in that appeal, the postcard to abutters triggered that owner to take down the sign. So receiving some notification, official notification from the city, was apparently compelling enough to indicate that, yes, you're in violation, yes, just take it down after seven years, and so that happened, and so it's, the challenge for us is having to have spent, you know, $325 to submit an appeal, when, you know, a postcard from the city of that notice of this hearing, you know, from over a week ago or so, was clearly enough of an official correspondence to compel the owner to comply. So that's where things are at.
So what is the relief you're looking for now if the sign's been taken down?
Well, so the appeal is of the building commissioner's decision, and so, of course, we would recover that $325 likely from the owner, or, you know, I don't know if people recovered from the city.
Oh, you just want to complete the appeal process?
Yes.
So that you can go to the owners' group and say, look, we spent this money?
Yes. We have, because this has happened in the past, there is a pattern within our condominium association of individuals having to spend money on legal action to compel owners to comply with laws. That's happened not just with sign ordinances, you know, but with other things, and not just for us, but with other owners having to do the same, and it's a bad pattern, you know, that someone would have to sort of subsidize somebody complying with a law that's on the books, that's easily enforced, that's easily, you know, kind of complied with. So, yeah, so following you, completing the hearing process is why we're here tonight.
Even if, I mean, if we were a court, which we're not, we would have two things to say, one, the matter is moot.
Right.
The remedy has been received, you know, without the need for us to make a decision.
Right.
And the other thing that a court would say is, and we're not, that a court doesn't give what are called comfort orders, just an order so that somebody appearing before the court can accomplish something that person wants to accomplish.
Right, right. And I think in this case, you know, certainly we were not acting out of some kind of spite or have you, you know, it was continued frustration, but I think for me being here, again, having been a former planning board member, I think it's very important to establish whether or not the city would like to know that either its zoning laws are enforced or they aren't, or know what the rationale is for selectively not enforcing complaints that have been submitted that have had, you know, kind of a rational basis.
But what? So, so you're asking us to overturn the decision of the building inspector even though it's completely moot?
Yes.
Yes. The decision was to not enforce.
Correct.
And so the appeal is of non-enforcement.
Correct.
And perhaps the removal of the sign is the moot piece of this.
There is another non-conforming sign in the building right now, so that could be enforced.
But that would have to be a different applicant.
Yeah, we didn't submit a complaint for that one, that's another business that moved.
Obviously, you're not looking for any money back from the city, that's not what you're saying. You're saying, and isn't it enough to go to the other unit owners and say, whether or not we issue a decision here, isn't it enough to be able to say, you had to spend this money to trigger this sequence that led to the removal of the sign?
Not clear, no, probably not, but, I mean, I think that's neither here nor there for you and your board, you know, I mean, how our association functions is a separate matter, but, you know, I think, again, as a business owner who voluntarily complied with all zoning laws in the past, you know, has spent, you know, every time a business closes and you have to take down a sign, it's several hundred dollars, or more, depending on the sign, I guess, you know, and that's something that people voluntarily do because they are acting in good faith, that the city also believes that these laws are important, and that they'll be enforced, and it's, yeah, it's just odd to me that that would be, that, you know, that you all would let a decision stand that indicates the opposite of that.
But it's moot, it's moot. I don't know, maybe people feel differently, and I'm not, I haven't made up my mind here, but we're being asked to decide, first of all, I don't think we take lightly any request to overturn a decision of the building inspector, because the building inspector has discretion and leeway and professional expertise and other reasons for decisions that are made, but what's really kind of, has this, anything like this ever happened before, where, we've been asked to make a decision about something that's, where on the facts that the controversy is moot, or has been resolved?
I think what typically happens is an applicant would withdraw because it has become moot, but I can't say that in the instance of a request to overturn a decision, an administrative decision, that that's been the case. I'm just thinking of other issues, you know, that might have come before you, that have been resolved or something, but...
Never, I've been on a planning board and a zoning board for like about 25 years now, and never saw anything like that. Well, I wonder if we're okay with this discussion at this point, or should we go into discussion after a hearing from...
Well, is there, well, we could, from the building inspector, absolutely. If you're done, are you finished for now, and you'll have a chance to comment further, obviously?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Louis Hassel, building inspector from North Hampton. We were first notified, requested to order the sign removed in January of this year, and the first response was that we would direct the owner of a building to remove the sign, and the, there's, the people who complained are certainly, per zoning's definition of an owner, an owner. We try to avoid inserting ourselves in conflicts among condo owners. It's, for us, the ownership of a building has no bearing on that it's a building, that the building code applies, and that zoning applies, and so, and back and forth emails from, I think, January right through October, we kept saying, you're an owner, and no, we're not going to order the sign down. We could have, there was, we could conceivably have ordered the sign down and then started fining the owner, the person who complained, because the sign wasn't down. I opted to, you know, to not insert the building department into this condo association conflict.
And the owner, now I'm really confused about who the owner is, and who owns the sign. Usually on the outside of a building, a condo, isn't that a common area, and it's a responsibility of the whole association?
So it would be, and that did come up, that, yes, the only way that the association, which is the, the commercial owner who owns the four units is a large shareholder of the condominium association, so that person was not willing to comply generally unless there is some formal order. But, you know, I mean, this raises a very curious issue, because this is not the only condominium association in the city, and I think that there's a real disconnect about what ownership is and what applies where, I mean, this was very clearly a commercial sign, it's very easy to look up the commercial ownership of the building, and you would find two names, one of which is the old bookstore, and one of which is all of the other commercial properties within the association, so it's not clear to me why it, the correspondence, you know, it was maybe three emails between my husband and John Frye, you know, to try to explain what a condominium is, and that there are individual unit owners, and an order to that commercial unit owner would have been sufficient, it wouldn't have sort of inserted into any kind of condo conflict, you know, it's, you know, we're talking about the physical structure, and there are seven individual people who are all attached to various units, and that commercial property is very easily identified with a particular owner, so, yeah...
Maybe the sign was identified with a prior owner, but the exterior of the building is usually a common area, which means it's under the control of the association.
Right, which, again, that's why we brought it up when John Frye said, resolve this on your own, we did bring this up at a condominium meeting, and that particular unit owner agreed to comply, and knew that there, that things were out of compliance, that if the building department was going to enforce it, there would be a fine, you know, they understood all of that and agreed back in March to remove the sign, but just opted not to follow through with that.
Thank you, I'd like to hear more...
I'd ask the board to look at the definition of in-zoning of owner, and understand that there are a large number of different sorts of organizations of condominiums in the city, and we use the definition in-zoning of an owner, it's the duly authorized agent, attorney, publisher, purchaser, designated trustee, leasing, or any person having invested or equitable interest in the use structure or lot in question, and certainly the people who are complaining are owners under that definition, and so letting them know that they needed, if they wanted the sign removed, they needed to remove it, they is something that I feel we couldn't, it's a slippery slope, and we opt not to go down that, so...
Would your enforcement letter, would it not have gone to the association?
The association doesn't have a name, and the association doesn't have a mailing address.
So it would have had to have been however many, seven to 10 separate letters to every owner that has a share of ownership of the exterior facade where that sign was mounted?
That's information that, I don't have information about condo associations, you know, rules, articles, you know, the, I think honestly, it would be difficult for our department to involve ourselves in those sorts of things.
May I answer your question?
If you were going to mail a letter to an owner, could you find the owners of the building under the tax rolls or whatever? You didn't just have the address of the complainant or...
Of course, because if, you know, if we couldn't have gotten them through the assessor's database, we could have gone to the registry. But it seemed like a pretty simple situation where it's something that the condominium association needed to work out for themselves. It wasn't the sort of, and we went back and forth for almost a year.
But to take the appellate's position, the ordinance does say that a sign is supposed to be removed if it's for a business that isn't there anymore?
Right, and we, when the first complaint came in, we responded by telling, it was Mr. Poe at that point, that he was an owner of the building, and that any actions we took would be directed at him.
But not only at him.
I don't see where in the zoning's definition of owner, we have to go any farther than a single person who has equitable interest in the structure.
So you're thinking, I think you said before, was it would have led to sort of an absurd outcome, where you would be fining the same person who requested that you issue the order to remove the sign?
That's what I could see, and that's, and we did point out that that's one of the penalties for not complying, and so if we did issue the order, it, you know, the idea that the sign got taken down after we issued the order, after, even though we didn't issue the order, the corollary, we issued the order, the sign doesn't come down, we start writing tickets, and it, the, the reason that we wouldn't ultimately, didn't, I opted not to issue the order, was to avoid inserting myself in a conflict in a condominium, condominium association.
Or were there people, was there anyone communicating to your office that they didn't want to take down the sign?
No.
So what was the conflict, just that it hadn't been taken down, and despite...
And we dealt, again, with Mr. Poe, Mr. Poe wanted us to issue an order to take the sign down.
So did you feel like your office was just being sort of asked to get involved in order to fix a dispute among unit owners in this condo, is that...
That's exactly what we thought, and that's exactly what we attempt to avoid. And one of the situations that comes up quite frequently is that we'll get a complaint about a tenant, and, you know, and we respond to a complaint about a tenant by contacting the property owner. We avoid inserting ourselves into these sorts of discussions when, if a tenant is complaining about a landlord, Board of Health is the authority having jurisdiction over that, and they can invite us, but the idea of, we deal with buildings and structures and uses, we don't deal with ownership.
I think, here's my opinion on this.
I think, here's my opinion on this, is that a sign on a building like this, Immerman and Associates building can be part of the history of the building and the people might want it up, might not want to have it.
But that's why I asked, was there anyone saying they didn't want to take it down?
But what I'm saying is that there was a complaint to the building inspector that they wanted the sign down. Building inspector followed all the proper procedures to get the sign down, and in the end, the sign came down.
No, I think, I think we didn't follow all the procedures. We could have issued a formal order of enforcement and notice of violation for a sign. We could have done that, and we opted not to because of the way the situation played, of the way the situation evolved.
But what I mean, you were in contact, you weren't ignoring...
We did respond in writing to every time we were contacted about it.
And then the sign is gone now. So it seems to me that, as you said in the beginning, that it's moot. Everything, all the procedures were, except for fining someone.
Again, a court would say, this is a decision we don't have to make because the matter has resolved itself. But I think we're being asked to make one anyway, at least to...
From the perspective, because I'm not quoting on this, but from the perspective of this as a straightforward request based on an appeal to come, to ask the city to defend, just to come to their defense and follow through on upholding the zoning policy, feels to me like, Sarah, your question is too, that the removal of the sign, the fact that the sign is gone is what's moot. That the request here is about the appeal and not about whether the sign is gone or not.
Yeah, I understand, I hear what you're saying. But the appeal is of a decision of the building inspector not to enforce the ordinance that required the removal. But it's been removed. I mean, we're sort of dancing around two sides of the same...
I'd like to...
If a building is abandoned for, you know, business goes out, goes out of business, then you have a situation where the city, through the building inspector, has the ability to get rid of any signage. If people don't want to get rid of the signage and are not complaining about it, the building inspector stands back. In this case, at the end of a period of time, someone complained to the building inspector to remove the sign. And the building inspector went through all the procedures except for fining someone.
Well, and issuing an enforcement order.
There was never any enforcement issued or letters to him.
Right. But went through, was not negligent in any way of, of the thing. I mean, he could have stepped in and said that we're gonna start fining people after the 38th or whatever it is, a hundred dollars a day until the sign comes down. But in the meantime, the sign's down. So I don't see where there's a problem at all.
What I'm, what I'm seeing is perhaps, and I understand that position of getting pulled into things that, there's a lot of personalities involved and, and, you know, and then you try to, you try to help and then you end up getting, you know, hit in the face or something. But there's, there's three other pieces, I think. One is that this, the motivation of the appellate, of the whole beginning of this, had to do with a fire, an event that was, I don't know how, I don't know exactly how catastrophic it was, but it was, was there any, no comment from fire department or anything on this?
There are no safety issues here, right? There are no safety or public health or safety issues.
Well, that was, that was the discussion, was that if there's a sign that says there's some occupants in here, where's Mr. Immerman? Is he still in the building? The building's burned, he's still in there?
But, but the offices that Mr. Immerman previously occupied were occupied by people who had been someone else's main Immerman necessarily, but it's not like people live, as the sign says, people live here and the fact, people don't live here.
It'd be like if Florence Hardware burned down and people were looking for Orkut and Hussey.
So, so if that issue is not of particular concern, then the next, I think there's a, there's a larger issue, is that I would like to empower the building inspector to enforce and have, have power to come down and fine.
I think that in this situation, we certainly had the authority and the zoning ordinance would have, could have, perhaps should have required that we issue the order. We declined based on the specific situation, the fact that there was no safety issue and the fact that this was an internal conflict and not something that was not doable. It wasn't, nobody was, I don't believe anyone was being, I don't, I believe it's simply that the conflict among the unit owners and that, and my decision, the very specific decision, was to not get involved in a conflict between unit owners in a situation where there's no life safety issues, there's no, isn't a public nuisance, none of that, none of those situations existed.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I think one of the big issues comes back to this notion of what a condominium is. So that every condominium association in the city is a legal entity. The 32 Masonics Street Trust Association, it's in the registry of deeds, it receives mail, it receives a gas bill, its property manager is listed with a mailing address in the registry of deeds, you know, it is an entity, it is a building. I think maybe the, the misunderstanding here was that, yes, there are separate issues about a variety of different things among owners, but this was not one of them. This was a very straightforward, sort of low-hanging fruit of this entity, the 32 Masonics Street Trust Association, is out of compliance with a zoning by law. We are at risk of being fined and then an agreement to no longer be out of compliance. And then that agreement wasn't followed through on. So it wasn't, as I said earlier, you know, it, it wasn't as if, you know, we were like, oh, we're all having conflict about each other and we hate each other, what can we do to make someone's life difficult? Let's file a complaint. It was born out of that event. And there was, you know, the event, it was fairly catastrophic, the building is still condemned, it is not occupied, we have been displaced for the year, you know, the, the fire happened at 6:00 AM, so the commercial units were not occupied at that time. But there were significant instances over those, that day and the ensuing days, where multiple parties were attempting to account for not only who was in the building at the moment of the fire, but afterwards. And so that was the impetus to say, let's get into compliance. And the, you know, my husband reaching out to the building department was, you know, to sort of say, yes, we understand that we're part of the association and if you need to issue a citation or begin to fine the association, that that action will compel compliance, that that is what will compel the association as a whole, as represented by, you know, it has three out of five trustees now, you know, will compel those trustees to comply. But, you know, every association is just an entity, physical building, there's, there's no need to sort of track down every individual owner. It's, you know, it gets correspondence, et cetera.
But, I have two questions, again, playing devil's advocate the other way. You're not saying that the building inspector should never have the discretion not to enforce something that's, that's in the ordinance, especially when no, when typically no, no, there's no threat to safety?
I think I would agree with that, but with an asterisk that not all zoning laws in every zoning district have the same import. So I think that when it comes to the central business district and it comes to, you know, visible historic properties, et cetera, that, you know, certainly there's always some amount of discretion, but, you know, this wasn't some far-flung house in the middle of nowhere where no one was gonna show up, you know, looking for Immerman and Associates lawyers and, you know, but that our central business district and our downtown historic district, that's where the application of those laws has the biggest impact on the largest number of people who are in downtown, who are, who are interacting with these buildings.
And what about the idea that, do you, are you suggesting that the office of the building inspector can and should be used sort of as a, as a tool to resolve a dispute or with your own...
No, no, certainly not. Yeah, certainly not. I mean, it's, it's a tool to enforce the laws that are on the books. I think, you know, as they say, a lot of this, you know, the sign is down, so yes, that's terrific. But a lot of this is not having a consistent way of dealing with condominium buildings, not just ours.
But if we issued a decision, there's, there's no precedent setting by zoning boards of appeal. There's no precedent setting. Every application is fact-specific.
Right.
So it's not like if, if we issued a decision overturning the decision on a point that is, as a practical matter, completely moot. And by the way, if we were to get appealed, I guarantee you, a court would say, what in the world were they issuing a decision?
Yeah.
Arguably, it's beyond the scope of our authority to issue a decision because it, because it's moot, the sign is down. It would be more like to send some sort of a message of like slapping the wrist of the building inspector, which I would not be comfortable with. And, and I don't mean to be provocative by saying that, but, but, but it could be viewed that way. It sort of feels like, well, it's moot, it doesn't matter, the sign is down, so, but more importantly, it's not like if we don't grant the appeal, that that undermines the authority of this or any other section of the building ordinance, of the zoning ordinance, because we don't have precedent-setting authority. Every application before us is so fact-specific, including this one, obviously. This is a, you couldn't make up these facts.
Right. And I think that that's true, what you say, from a legal perspective, just, you know, so two points, just to echo what Maureen said, you know, my impetus for coming here was that when we saw the decision, it was, you could appeal this decision. It wasn't, you can ask the zoning board of appeals to send a citation, you know, so we took a fairly literal approach of, okay, well, this is about appealing the decision and whether or not the sign is up is irrelevant. And so we're not lawyers and so on.
Did you file, excuse me, did you file the appeal after the sign was down or did you file?
No, 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 it was, it was the...
So then the sign coming down, to me, changes everything. It's just, it's just...
Well, so the second point I want to make, knowing that you all don't set legal precedent is, is just to raise broadly in Northampton, the impact of the general approach towards complying with zoning when, when it is clear that things are not enforced. So the sandwich boards is a great example. When there are business owners who see, oh, I know I'm not supposed to have a sandwich board on Main Street because I'm blocking, you know, the ADA accessible sidewalk, et cetera, when there is no enforcement because someone isn't complaining, it perpetuates. And then other folks who are in compliance say, well, that's a real bummer because I'm paying $3,000 a month in rent, I'd love to have a sandwich board, but, you know, so it creates this very unusual tension between what, what laws people choose to follow and what laws they don't, when they see what the approach is in town.
Sandwich boards are one of the areas that we do enforce quite vigorously. There's this really specific and relatively new sandwich board ordinance, and the sandwich boards on Main Street, by and large, and are in compliance with that ordinance.
Also, we're not talking about something that blocks handicapped accessibility with this sign.
Right, right.
I know it's a limited analogy.
Yes. Zoning is not simply about safety. I mean, we do keep coming back to safety, but zoning laws are not simply about safety, they're about quality of life on other levels. They're about broader plans for treaties for other, for things that don't just have to do with safety. They're about lighting, signage, some of it's just that.
But if, but if the building inspector had to enforce every sentence in the ordinance every time, it's physically impossible.
I agree with you there, but I just, I feel like it's not simply a safety issue.
It's the job description, but it's an impossible task.
Right. So, you know, I'm not interested in slapping the hand, I'd rather give that hand a hammer. I want to make him more powerful. I want him to be able to enforce things and not have to, I, I really understand the reluctance to, you know, get tangled in anything with a condo board. And, I mean, it's hard enough dealing with any owner. And, and all of the decisions that go through his office that we never see, I mean, there's I don't know how many hundreds in any given time period, that's a, that's a lot. And I respect that and I appreciate that. And I, I, I don't want, I don't want that office to be understaffed, underworked, overworked, excuse me. I want to have time to, yeah, it's true, not, you're not, you know, enforcing every letter of every ordinance every minute, but if we're gonna have a real law, there has to be some enforcement. So I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's, I think it's very important that he has discretion and I'd like him also to have, I think the, the thing about condo boards, if it's, if there's an aversive situation where, where the city is disincentivized to enforce something because condo boards are problematic, they are also ubiquitous. They're all over the place. How many are there? And, and is that gonna keep undermining his authority? I don't want to see that.
See, I think all of these discussions, I would, I would consider to be very important if the sign were still up. But there is no matter in controversy, the sign has come down. In a way, you could say the system worked because of the appeal or whatever, the sign has come down. But I just, I...
So the action of the appeal and the city sending the cards, notification, was effective?
It achieved your goal, your ultimate goal, which was, which is what you were asking the building inspector to do, and that was by unexpected route that the goal was achieved.
An extensive, unexpected route. Yes, we had to pay to make that happen, so we had to effectively subsidize the city's enforcement of it.
So I'm, I'm for both of you.
I mean, one thing I will offer, you know, I understand where you're all coming from. I think, once again, to drive this home, is that the bigger issue is, we cannot have condominium associations be wholesale, sort of put in this kind of strange category with this assumption that any interaction with the building department is because there's conflict or, you know, that it's, it's this passionate, personal thing. It's not. It's a building and it's a business entity and there's a board. And in nearly all cases, or in many cases here, that board and that entity has hired a professional property management company, you know, so these are very findable entities that the building department can be interacting with in a very professional and dispassionate way, as one would with any other individual building owner or property owner around the city. So to the extent that, that your board and the municipal department can work together to ensure that the municipal department has the ability to interact with this particular type of property, which is ubiquitous and there are more of them that are being built.
See, our, I'm not sure our board generally plays that role, other than in this hearing to say, to ask the building inspector to take into consideration for future matters, especially involving condominiums, the points that have been raised, that there's some lessons here.
I could, I would show to the planning board and ask them to amend, change the definition of order from any person having... of order from any person having vested interest to all persons having vested interest. If we did, if we were to deal with condominiums, and this is not the first time we've had to deal with a condominium, and this is not the first time that we've dealt directly with one of the individuals in a condominium association. And had them been dealing with the rest of the condominium association, there was a protracted situation for the stairs that lead from South, Old, New South Street down to Clark Avenue, and that, it ended up being resolved, but we didn't, we didn't order everybody who owned the building, we ordered a single individual because of the way the zoning is written.
You know, we could just as easily be sitting here with the building inspector having ordered the people to take the sign down, and they didn't want it down because they were part of the Immortals Associates-
In other words, they could have appealed the decision of the building inspector. Although, the ordinance is pretty clear in its face that it's supposed to be removed. I'm not sure there'd be much strength to that appeal.
But that's a good point.
But, I mean, I, to me, there's nothing here, really.
Because the sign has been taken down. By the way, it requires a unanimous vote to overturn a decision of the building commissioner, so maybe we should move on. I just had a question. We'll give people a chance for any closing remarks. But I want, the reason I was trying, I tried to read you today is, this, I'm looking at the staff report, you know from planning board, we get a staff report. And it was ambiguous to me, I just couldn't tell if that was a recommendation one way or the other.
Yeah.
It's not a recommendation one way or the other. I mean, you're just saying, it's very, I'll read it, it's a public record, that the staff recommendation said, "Many provisions of the ordinance are not enforced until or unless a complaint is filed. Though there may be few, if any, complaints ever filed for old signs that are not removed, it would be consistent with typical enforcement procedures to rarely enforce some aspects of the zoning," assume that's zoning code or zoning ordinance, "and only when a complaint was filed." Now, here, a complaint was filed, to be clear, but the goal of the complaint has already been achieved, the sign has been removed. Any other questions from the board before we-
I'm glad you raised that, because I was confused with that wording too. The word rarely made me, made me think it was going down a different path.
Be consistent with typical enforcement procedures to rarely enforce some, I think that goes to my point, that there are countless rules in the zoning ordinance, and it's not physically possible, no matter how well-staffed an office is, to enforce all of them. Granted, we had a complaint here. And if that sign were still up, there could be a very different outcome here, because we would still have what courts call a matter in controversy. So any other questions or comments from the board, and then we can, if there are any more comments from either party?
My observation is, I'm glad this came up and I see it sort of as a cautionary tale for-
Yeah, I think that, I think some of the, it costs some money and I'm sorry about that, but I think that the building inspector has raised a really interesting and important point, that there's language in the ordinance that contributed to his dilemma here. And I don't know if that's something that can be addressed or what the process would be. It would be a change in the language that would ultimately go to city council, because it's an amendment to the ordinance.
It could be. I mean, there's also, I don't think the language necessarily has to be changed, because again, the building commissioner has brought-
Brought discretion, which is necessary.
Right. And so that's the other point, is you don't want to go to the opposite extreme and make it so specific that it might limit that discretion. I don't know that it necessarily would be, but, I'm not sure, I mean, yes, the language could be changed, I'm not sure that, you know, we could look at, it's definitely not some, obviously, this doesn't come up all the time, so it's definitely not one of the things that's been, you know, put in press.
It might be something for interested members of your condo association to take, probably starting with city council or-
Yeah, I mean, it could have started the staff, though, for sure. It's not, I mean, again, it's just, it's not, it's not one of those things that's happening daily and we have an issue with. Typically, when there's things that are, will happen more and more.
But no matter what anyone's reaction might be about how that played out, or whether it should have, it's a legitimate point sincerely made by the building inspector, that there is that ambiguity in that question. And also, what we're balancing here is the need for enforcement and the seriousness of knowing that the language in an ordinance means something, will be enforced, versus the equally legitimate need of the building inspector to have discretion in doing his job because of the sheer magnitude of his job. And all, you know, and then you add into it this idea that part of that discretion, in this case, I think, included a determination that you didn't want to get involved with what you viewed as anyway, but honestly and understandably, as sort of a private dispute among condo owners. But that was the perception that is being described to us. Anything else from, have you been able to say what you wanted to say, or anything else you wanted to tell us?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, you know, I think I appreciate this discussion. I think, you know, David and Maureen, you both raised very good points, which is, yes, there might be this huge volume, there's no way to go around actively enforcing, you know, any and all violations that are occurring at all times in our city. There'd be too many. Which is why the trade-off is making it a complaint-based system. And I don't know how many complaints come in, I don't know how many complaints come in from the Central Business District. My guess is not thousands a month, or, you know, I mean, I'm very privileged having served on the planning board and been aware of what the process is. So my assumption is that there are many people in condominium associations who don't even, don't even know what the municipal legal remedy is when things are, you know, when their association is out of compliance with something. But I think that, looking specifically at that language, you know, for legislative matters and planning board and, you know, for council, look at that language to ensure that people who live in condominium associations need to also know that they are protected by the same zoning laws that an individual building owner would be protected by. And that's, that's kind of where things, there should never be a question of, you know, oh, who do I go to, or, you know, who controls this? And, you know, and I respect that the building inspector is empathetic or sympathetic to the fact that condominiums include lots of different people and personalities, but, you know, I think to the extent that the protocol is to presume that complaints that are coming in, these things involve technical matters, you know, that maybe there are other people who try to use laws as a weapon, you know, like, we're not those people, you know.
And I didn't mean to suggest that-
No, no, I know what you mean.
That was an example.
But, you know, that when the sort of feelings and perceptions about an interpersonal dynamic are kind of undermining this very kind of straightforward technical issue, you know, that if that's going to happen simply because it's a condominium versus, you know, it's store, or it's another individual property owner building, you know, that that kind of makes it very difficult for condominium owners. And we do know there will be more of them here in the city. There, you know, there are new ones being built around town, you know, and we know that. And so it is, I think, looking more carefully at that language, you know, to ensure that it's very clear what the legal controlling entity in contact is, would be enormously helpful.
Yeah, I think there are really three points I'm hearing. One is, the letter of this ordinance is crystal clear, the sign is required to come down. Secondly, yes, you understand that the building inspector is extremely busy and has to have discretion in enforcement, and that is why it is effectively a complaint-based system. Thirdly, you made a complaint, which is what is supposed to trigger the enforcement of a crystal-clear ordinance. And fourthly, now that we've heard some more background from the building inspector's perspective, there is this, not confusion, but ambiguity created in the case of a condominium, which is concerning, because there are lots of condominiums. I'm hearing all four points. If the sign were still up, then this would be a different hearing and a lot, a different, it would be, it would be a different situation, taking into account.
Did you all know it came down?
I walked by, I walked by, because I had the paperwork.
Yeah, yeah.
And I remember the sign, everyone knows that sign.
Right.
And I saw it was down. And it was like, that's the other reason I was going to call you.
Did it come down?
Gosh, I have to look at my texts, but a couple days ago, I mean-
Yeah, within the last week, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we got the postcards.
That's the other reason, I rang you and didn't even bother to leave a voicemail, I was going to say, isn't the sign gone? What, it's actually, but we've hashed that out enough. So, anyway, anything else?
I'd like to ask about the other sign that's still on the door.
Yeah, yeah, that Thompson Financial.
And why is that not part of the issue?
Has she moved permanently?
She's moved to the Felt Building and-
So she was gone.
The notification on the door just says, "We have moved to the Felt Building."
And she doesn't intend to come back, as far as you know, after the place is fixed up? I just assumed that was the answer.
Yeah, we're not that unit owner, so I assume that, you know, that company was a tenant of the door.
Oh, I see, that was a tenant.
And, yeah, and I think, you know, for us, we didn't include it in our complaint because nobody asked us, you know, it didn't come up multiple times in conversation, no one said to us, like, hey, where's Thompson Financial, you know? But the law firm came up multiple times in multiple instances within hours of the fire. And so that's why it was sort of on the radar.
Right. But I should ask why you're asking about that, I didn't let you finish. You were just curious.
I wondered what, I just, I was curious as to why we were dealing, over the course of a year, with one specific sign, not realizing that there were other violations on the building.
Right.
Okay.
That's interesting. Good. Nobody knows the answer.
Size and visibility.
Yes, size and visibility.
It's substantially smaller and lower.
This is for another day, but I was curious, that Immortals sign is so large, was it within code?
Well, actually, having multiple, having multiple signs?
No, you can have more than one sign.
If there's more than one business there, okay. So those were-
But there is a limit to the total size.
It was probably a little bit over, oversized based on-
Frontal?
The-
The surface of the-
The surface area of the, of the sign against the area of the story or of the facade the sign was mounted on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
A second, all in favor unanimous?
So one of the things I like about zoning board is how specific our jurisdiction is. And I also like the way, David, you clarify that occasionally. So here we have a situation where you're being asked to make a decision on something, and I take your point about it being, because the sign is down and it is very specific to this enforcement request.
So no further relief? The requested relief is no longer needed? So, but we do, we do need a motion just on the-
Let's hear the, the specific relief is-
It would have meant to overturn the decision of the building inspector not to enforce the ordinance, but enforcement is no longer needed because there's nothing to enforce, the sign is gone.
I mean, you could make a motion to deny the request based on the fact that-
The sign has been, yeah, that the sign has been removed, so there's no need to, to grant, to grant the appellant's request of relief. There's no relief, there's no relief to be granted.
Okay, I make a motion that we deny the appeal of the building commissioner's determination for a sign at, deny the appeal of the building commissioner's determination for a sign at 32 Masonic Street, Northampton. That's just MAP ID 31D-120 on the ground, so there's no sign there. And that everything has been taken care of.
Second.
And just, I think we've discussed it enough, but the idea in my mind is that the relief that has been requested, and that is the purpose of the appeal, is no longer necessary because the sign has been removed. And in a different situation, if it hadn't been removed, it would be a different discussion. So the motion was to deny, right? So all in favor of-
And she seconded.
And she seconded, so all in favor of denying, so that's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting discussion.
Really useful.
Well-
Thanks.
Your appellant. Oh, I guess we have to move to adjourn, so, and there are no minutes, right? So, a second.